So if you bid in February or March, you're gonna do way better on a street project. You wait and bid in that in May or June, you'll be lucky if you even get bids.
Okay.
Because they've already booked their schedule and they're not interested. And then if they are gonna do it and piss off one of their other clients, it's gonna be because they charged you one hundred percent more than they needed to. And that, at that point, we're rejecting those bids anyway, because they're just too high.
We do save a lot of money, too, through state bid pricing.
Okay.
I wish I could buy a set of four truck tires for the price that the city of Isanty pays for, for a work truck. Parts, lighting. We get huge breaks.
Sure.
Bigger than you can imagine. Sometimes fifty percent off a lot of stuff.
Okay.
So the city does save money buying through state bid pricing. As a whole, they do save a lot of money.
I was just wondering if there was a way to negotiate, but see, I didn't know the laws, so unfortunately, that's what we're stuck with. But I'm happy you guys are paying attention to it and it's a thing, like if you see it's a huge red flag, then we would appreciate, or I would appreciate knowing that so we can make these decisions, because it's a lot of money getting thrown around.
Smart guy on the payroll.
Yep, I know.
Jason and I, Jason and I spend a lot of time talking about and planning these things. When we start to come to a street project, pavement management projects, he and I have our first discussions in November about how we're gonna make this thing go well. And yeah, if we get bids that are not sufficiently priced, based on especially what he knows across other cities and counties, if they're not competitive, then we just won't do it. We'll do it, we'll rebid it next year. And if we don't get a good price, then we're not gonna do it.
Okay.
And a lot of the bids, like the previous road, road projects we've done in the last five, six years, a lot of them, a lot of, you'll get three, four bids usually, and some of them are twenty thousand dollars apart from the next one, and some are more. So, I mean, for the same job. So it's not like they're...
Yeah, you can, you can have, you can...
It's not like they're trying to set the market, you know?
Yeah, you can...
They're way off sometimes.
You can have a street project like Brookview South or Main Street or Sixth Ave, and you can have, you know, three, four, five, six bids, and the spread between highs and lows could be a full hundred or hundred and thirty thousand dollars different. And we're only talking about a project that might have only been seven hundred thousand to begin with. That's a really significant spread. And that happens. And there, usually if you follow up, like Jason said, you follow up with a contractor, usually there is an actual reason why one is so much higher. And it's usually their schedule's full, or that's not the type of work they wanted to do, they didn't think they could mobilize the equipment. There's a number of reasons that can happen.
Okay.
And today, all we're looking for is a motion to go out for the bids. So we'll definitely discuss, you know, the bids that come back in greater detail, and we can make some of those judgments when they do come back.
And I need motion to prove it.
Okay.
Second.
So I've got a motion to approve the going out for bids for the 2023 pavement management project from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Resolution, K six, resolution authorizing ad for bid for the water tower coating improvements.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So this is the same process step as the street project. We were authorized to develop the plans and specs. We have with the two alternate bids that we discussed regarding the tower, on the spot repairs on the exterior versus the full replacement on the exterior. So both alternates are gonna be in the bid package, so that when those bids come in, we can evaluate if it's cost effective to go with one versus the other, and if they actually came in as we were anticipating. This project would have a slightly longer window for open for bids. We would open bids, April twentieth is the schedule that we're looking at, because we really don't anticipate them starting work until June anyway. If we went with that simpler exterior project, it'd probably be about a two-month project. The full exterior option would be closer to the three-month project, and we're assuming it would fall somewhere between June and October. The specs are written, so that once they start, they have to continue and finish, so they can't just drag it out and have our water tower offline longer than it has to be. But we would give them some lenience on when they can decide to start, so we can hopefully get those better prices to fit schedules.
So I had read the, I think it was a 2017 report from Bolton and Mink on the water tower and the condition of it. Are we gonna get a newer report on that, or is that something that's in the works? Or are we just going based off that report? Because on that report, it doesn't actually look like there's a lot of areas that need attention. There are definitely some that need attention in that report, but are we gonna get updated information or photos?
So we did do the update. I believe we just kind of did a, like a two-page memo stating that same person, my coatings expert, reevaluated that exact same set of information, aside from the diver and that part of the wetting.
Yep.
Back in, I wanna say November, it was actually, well, I guess his report was done by November, I think he did it in like August or something. But I would have to see what photos he has, but I believe all we did was actually make a two-page write-up basically saying, yes, it's kind of continued getting worse as we, you know, on track to what we were expecting from five years ago. You know, now it's to that stage where it's worth exactly what we're doing. Finding out if it's gonna be cost effective to just do spot repairs or do the full replacement. So if you don't have, if you don't have the version that has that kind of update,
Yeah.
you know, we could certainly get you that. I'm sure he took photos with his reevaluation, but I don't believe he included it in his just kind of update letter at the time, so.
It was in September nineteenth of 2022, I can email it to council.
Okay, yeah, because I looked at, so I looked at, I read that whole thing, and there was, pretty much every area was marked as good condition, other than a few, a handful of select places, which are the obvious places, which are any water tower is gonna have the most issues, the top inside, which is where the condensation's gonna go. That's gonna always rust. There's areas that are just gonna rust, but for the most part, all of it was in good condition in 2017. So, I mean, I'm just proposing right now that we highly consider just a spot treatment. Obviously, we don't know the information yet, but I think it's important that we know that back then, everything pretty much, other than a few areas, was noted as good condition, so.
Yep, yep, and you know, and at that fifteen-year mark, that was kind of that minimum life expectancy. So the fact that it was still good at that time was more or less expected.
But he's gonna send us both quotes, so it's not, it's not a recommendation at this point. This is just for him to put it all...
I know.
Five years ago.
I know, I was just pointing it out.
So now, you know, now that it's the five years later, now we're into that twenty-year life. And I believe those results were basically just saying, now it's at the level that we expect of a twenty-year. It's past that good prime condition, it's starting to taper off. It's time to either catch it before you start having actual corrosion problems, you know? And the catch-it technique would either be spot repair the bad spots, but then you only get that ten-year life, or do the full thing and shoot for that fifteen, twenty-year life again. And so that's why we're doing the both costs. And if the cost difference is, you know, fifty percent, well, then it's that same life expectancy difference. You know, if there's a different balance between the price versus life expectancy when we get those prices in, you know, then we can kind of make that decision.
Motion to approve, second. I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to K seven, resolution to consider contract with J. Robinson Construction, Inc. for the renovation of nine oh one East Dual Boulevard, which is the new police department building.
All right, Mayor and council, you approved Resolution twenty-three zero four three, which is the funding for the renovation for the police department. Just a little background that you don't, if you were, we contracted Wold to do the engineering drawings for the renovation process, but not for their project management piece. So then we were able to send that out to get quotes per our policy for purchasing policy, which is under the hundred and seventy-five thousand mark that Becker had referred to. So I reached out to several of them. I had a few that weren't interested, because we weren't going through a general contractor or a project manager, since, you know, I'm gonna be trying to coordinate the other trades. So that limited some of the people that wanted to deal with that, because it's kind of a hassle, dealing with just a police officer trying to figure that out. But I did get the three quotes back from local. We had one in, another one in town, another one in Cambridge that gave quotes back. Robinson was the lowest one. He actually, he was one of the two that came out to site and visited. He came up with some cost savings in some of the engineering pieces that we sent back to Wold, and then we had those companies rebid them, so we could actually save some money, because, I don't know, there's different options, and Wold picked one option that was a little more expensive. So we had everybody bid that out. He did come in at the lowest bid, I think he was around twelve thousand dollars lower than the next one. So with that being said, I mean, that's, staff's recommendation is to move forward with that. I did ask him, because I did get a question from one of the councils today as far as warranty stuff. And it's not a residential. Under residential contracting law, there's laws that require every one, two, and ten-year warranties, but he honors the same thing on the commercial building as well, just so that question's been answered, so.
He's invested in our community, too.
And so I did ask City Minister Wood, because we used him for work done on the community center. I don't know how long ago it was, and had no issues with that and did good work there. So he's done good work for the rest of the past. And so that's a recommendation to move forward with that.
So I had a bunch of questions about this. Travis kind of showed me what was going on there today, and I was happy to see that. So there is, the biggest part of that is the evidence room, and that is, I think you said roughly eleven feet by forty foot is evidence room, or eleven feet tall and eleven feet wide. So we have, I think it's eighteen-foot tall buildings, so you have roughly four thousand cubic feet of space above that room. Now, J. Robinson thought that we couldn't build this structurally to stack stuff, or...
No, that was with Wold.
Okay, with Wold, okay. So my suggestion was, I mean, we have all this illuminate stuff, and we're basically on top of this evidence room, there's all this wasted space. So I would like to somehow see if there is a potential way to build that as a load-bearing area, see what the cost is, so we can utilize that four thousand cubic feet of space, which would store quite a bit of stuff. I don't know if there's a way to do that, but I don't think we're in a huge hurry necessarily to get this done. So I think if we can plan for this now and maybe use that extra space, I mean, that's quite a bit of space for storage that we're gonna be paying for either way, for heating and AC and all that stuff. So that was something I wanted to talk about. And then there was, there have been, I know every contractor's gonna have this issue, but there have been people in the community that saw this on the agenda and reached out and said they had issues with J. Robinson Construction's warranty. That is why I asked Travis about that specifically. So I just wanna know if there was a warranty, because in the residential stuff, there was two people that have had issues with him not warranting his work on brand-new houses. That included block cracking in the basement, drywall cracking, and leaky plumbing. So that was something that was a concern to me. So I guess I would just like to see if there's, before we go, move forward with this, I think the, if we can find a way to make that evidence room on top of it actually usable structurally, so we can store more stuff, I think that's a big thing. And then another question I had, which I asked Travis, and he gave me an answer, but I wanted to ask it anyways again. So could the ballistic window from the current PD building be moved into the new PD building at the same time that the staff moves in there? So say we, say we frame in the rough opening size for that current window we have in the current PD building, and then when the staff moves over the same day, we could have that window moved over there. That was just a way to potentially save money, but Travis had said that that might not work. So I guess I'm just trying to look at all this stuff with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that we're making the best long-term decisions financially and space-wise. So I brought, that's why I brought those couple things up.
The mezzanine kind of thing you referred to, that's a great idea for use of void space. But then typically, especially on a government building, engineers will need to get involved so they can load rate per square foot, what can be placed up there, and that's where the extra expense comes into.
That'll probably be a hundred thousand dollars by the time that's done.
Okay. Does anybody know if we can hang anything from the ceiling on that building? Or would that be another, that'd be another engineering thing?
Jason, do you have maybe a better guesstimate on what the cost would be to figure that out?
No, I don't personally, that's why with these buildings and structures...
Well, you're gonna have the engineering piece, plus then to make it load-bearing, it has to be load-bearing. When you start making things load-bearing, you just double, twidupled the cost of that.
Then you gotta place a sign on there to stating that this ceiling is per, so many pounds per square foot, and then usually there's a maximum you can put of weight up there total combined.
Okay.
It's just, I don't know if, that's just government buildings, or if that covers private buildings, but I know in my experience with the government buildings, that's cost a little more because of that.
Yep, it was just an idea I had, because I went and looked at it, and that's, it's extra space that we're gonna need. So I don't know if there was a way, before we move forward with this, to look into potential options. I mean, like I said, we have, I mean, we got, what, two years roughly before it has to be done with this? So I don't know, like planning now or exhausting every single possible option now to be a better long-run result might be something that is worth looking into. But I do, I certainly under...
It wouldn't hurt to ask our engineers, so are we using Wold for engineering, is that right?
Well, we did for the drawings and the engineering, and that discussion when they came out on site, that we had a little discussion on that, and, you know, the two issues, they'd have to look into it, they'd have to actually core into the concrete, see what's under there. And there's in-floor heat in there, so you'd probably eliminate that in that section over there as well. So just on a brief conversation was the cost was excessive, but they'd have to do more research and actually onsite, because we, I was able to do some coring, you know, just drill the hole on the other side where there is no in-floor heat to see what that was, because they wanted that information. But, so we had a brief discussion on it and just didn't really look into it too much, just because of their initial thought was they'd have to do a lot more research to figure what it was, and you'd have to put some kind of footing piece of the puzzle into that concrete.
So it was, when you guys were talking about it, it was assumed that it wouldn't be worthwhile to pursue?
It would be more expensive and just in the scope of our project, that I assume to be a lot of, a lot more money than it was gonna be worth at this time.
I guess I didn't know if there was, instead of coring into the, into the concrete slab, if you could add, say, like basically a floating foot, a floating on top of that, okay? I just didn't know.
Footings have to be in the ground on undisturbed soil, and they have to spread out a certain distance for the long weight it's gonna be hauled, and it has to be so thick to carry the weight load. And if it's got in-floor heating in it, you're gonna add another ten grand into it, because once you nick that line, it's either you eliminate it, or you tear it all out and try to fix it, so it ain't worth it.
Okay, well, I'd like, I guess I'd like to look into other options for utilizing the top of that, that, just that space. I mean, I don't know if we could hang hangs, you know, cantilever shelves off of the existing block wall, or I would like to just use that space somehow in a way that makes it worth it. Because otherwise, I mean, why not just build the evidence room all the way up, and then you have room for so much more evidence, if you're gonna have open space? I mean, it's just, you know, when you're, when you're talking about four thousand cubic feet of space, that's not free. That costs money every single year, so if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have it, we might as well make the best of it.
Can we have a two-story evidence room?
Some shelving like you just mentioned, it's anchored into the outside wall?
And then hung on the end from the reinforced rafter, or, I mean, could you have a two-story evidence room? I mean, you already have, you're already doing, you're already doing the, I mean, most of it is gonna be the actual, the actual construction of it. The amount of lumber material and sheet rock, I don't think is gonna be that much more cost. Is that...
I don't think you really need that.
Yeah, I mean, it could be used for storage, but I wouldn't say for evidence itself, no, we won't need anymore, not even the next hundred years here.
Okay.
For storage is plausible.
Okay. So if, I mean, I guess it would be useful to know what the engineers say we could actually put on it for weight. If we could do just a, just a light storage up there, and then wall it in or not wall it in or whatever, I think it's something important for us to look at before we just go ahead with this. If they, you know, say if we, we do this right now, and the next year, our engineer gets back to us and says, well, you could have done this, and it would only cost you a couple hundred bucks, but now you have to redo all this stuff, and it's gonna cost you thirty thousand dollars, because you already did all this work the first time, like you have to plan this stuff out. So I know you're doing a good job, Travis, and I'm not knocking you at all for it, it's just a, something that I just thought of.
And the only thing, if we do that, we had that question that J. Robinson brought up as far as changing some of the structural pieces that was able to save the whole project, probably thirteen thousand for all the bids down. I asked that question in September. Now, we already paid our bill to them, so they're kind of just doing us a favor, because they've already did their job. I just got the answer a month ago, so we could be six months out for getting that answer, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think the conversation you had where that didn't sound feasible, to me, that's enough of a, of a, looking into it. I mean, I think if they talked about it and it was an idea that was discussed, I mean, they didn't think it was worthwhile to pursue, but I do like your idea, maybe we can put some shelving up there that's, you know, hanging off the walls or something like that. And I don't know how a lot of those displays are stored, I mean, if they can just be stored on, you know, bars sort of that come out from the wall, or who knows? But I think that's something to think about down the road. But for today, you know, I think that looks like you've got a pretty reasonable bid here. And, you know, the one thing I was curious on, I mean, as far as the office part of what you're doing, I mean, how many offices are you gonna have in there? And I know we're not, you know, it's not like we're taking up all the space now, we're kind of building what we need, sort of as we go, right?
Yes, I mean, realistically, the office space, like the office renovation piece, is to make a secure entrance, right? And to put an interview room up front, and taking the stairway out of that, going upstairs, which then creates, again, so we don't waste space, because that was the other thing we talked about, is what if we just did temporary stuff and then later added, you know, the floor trusses on top of that to extend the second floor over that mezzanine? And you'd have, all the money spent today would have been wasted for the next time we renovate it. So that's just on that, the rest of the offices, there's, well, the records office has a renovation just because the ballistic windows going in there. But then there's the one, two, three offices and everything else, and everything else upstairs is not being dealt with right now. So it's just that front mezzanine and that whole piece that's gonna be renovated.
So after I went and looked at it today, I thought, so there's, I mean, basically you're framing in a forty-by-eleven-by-eleven room with a mesh in the wall, which is an extra cost, obviously. And then you're basically adding, how big is that mezzanine added? Probably forty foot by twenty, forty by thirty roughly, somewhere in there. So, I mean, basically, and then the window and the doors and whatnot, but to me, that number just seemed extremely high. So I was curious, I mean, that's like a small house, he is cheaper.
I did look at just one piece of that puzzle, I was just, I called one of the vendors on that. And so just our commercial doors, like here, were about twenty-seven to three thousand dollars, and we have eight of them. So you're talking, just in the doors, the material price is twenty-some thousand dollars.
That's actually pretty cheap.
It is on the cheap side, that's not with no hardware, no closers, no nothing, just to put it in price, because I, you know, trying to figure out what's more expensive, that's just one example of, you know, the commercial door system and how expensive that actually is.
Metal frames, solid corridors, flame retardant doors, yeah.
So my question was on that, how do we, how, on this example specifically, how do we reach out to these contractors? Because there's so many people that do this type of work, and there's so many people that do this type of work that don't know that we're looking for bids. So if we can make it more competitive, where we get, say, instead of getting three bids, we get six, how do we reach out to these people? Like, do the people just say, if I know a contractor and he wants to get in the loop and potentially bid on items like this, how do we get them to actually bid on that? Do you just need their email address, or, I mean, does it depend? Because there are people that I think would make these bids more competitive.
I think you were just contacted local people, to keep it local.
What the chief did on this project, these were not bids. The amount did not qualify for that one seventy-five, for that bid mark, where we actually would put it out on the certain bid websites that we use through Bolton and Mink. We do an advertisement in the paper, we post it online on our website. If it's under that threshold, typically what staff does is they solicit quotes. They reach out to a number of contractors, usually it's via email to get the ball rolling, and then we see who's got time, who's got time to submit a quote within the timeframe that we have, maybe depending on their workload, so typically, yeah. And we do add to that list, we make sure that we keep pounding the pavement till we get at least three. But we try to get as many as we can. But yeah, if there's other people who want to get in on projects like that, I think that staff tries to vet out as many as they can, and they know who builds in the area because of who pulls permits and stuff, but we try to reach out to numerous people.
Okay, so if someone's listening to this meeting and they're a contractor and they want to get involved, would they just reach out to you with their email and their license number and all that, or is that the best?
That'd probably be the best, yeah, and then I can float it out to other depart, to department heads, because depending on the project, department heads will start soliciting quotes for their own stuff, so.
Okay. Thanks.
I had had a conversation a few weeks back with another mayor from another town, and they were, and Mike, I don't know if this is applicable to this or not, but they were looking at using, I think it was CARES money or ARPA money to pay for their police force, like for wages for the police department. Do we have any of those funds left, and are they usable for construction like that?
You can, you can use...
Travis is looking at me like, probably not.
No, you can, you can use ARPA funds to the extent, within your, within your police force or public safety, to the extent that they were utilized in that capacity originally. So if there was no COVID response, attributable COVID response from the police department, you can't use that money now after the fact in that same manner. And we did track officer hours at the time, and the CARES Act makes, so now we're onto ARPA money, with the original CARES money, we did track that, and we did reimburse ourselves for that time. But there is no, there is no ongoing response, there is no ongoing cost that the police department is incurring, and so that would not be an eligible expense.
And see, there, they had actually, I think, contracted out for their police department, and so they were looking to start a new sort of, I don't even know if they would call it a police department, but have a police chief and another officer sort of to cover some of their time, and then contract out for the rest of it. But they were actually looking at future wages that they were planning to cover with that money. And I don't know if they were just looking into it, or, you know, because are they changing kind of all the time? Or is it, are the rules pretty consistent on the rules?
Let's say this.
And I don't know.
With, I would, I think I can say this diplomatically. With the ARPA funds, funding to the treasury to oversee that money was cut. I think there were a number of finance directors that maybe thought perhaps, and/or councils, that thought perhaps, no one's looking. I can tell you that funding has been restored, because I got an email today making that very clear. I would not roll the dice. How about that?
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, and maybe that was just something that they were looking into, and they hadn't used it yet or anything, but he just had mentioned it, so. No, I just wanted to, wanted to ask and see if it was an option, so. That number from, that hundred and forty-eight, I think it was, I mean, is that a, not to, it's not gonna exceed that number? It could be, potentially could be a little bit cheaper, or it's, that's what it's gonna be?
I'm assuming that's probably what it's gonna be, unless something changes, it wouldn't be higher than that number, obviously.
One thing I will point out is there was a ten percent contingency put in that, which we typically do at those thresholds of that dollar amount. Because as they're working, to have them stop work, to come back to council, to ask for more, we, you will see contingencies on a lot of projects, so that is included in this.
Okay. Any other questions, or do we have a motion to move forward?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the contract with J. R. Robinson, or excuse me, J. Robinson Construction, Inc. for the renovation at nine oh one East Dual Boulevard from Councilman Lundin, and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. And moving on to K eight, discussion regarding the development agreement with Wolf River Electric.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. In 2021, as you are aware, the city entered, the city of Isanty EDA entered into a purchase agreement with Wolf River Electric for ten acres for one dollar to construct two sixteen thousand square foot buildings, each on five acres. Unfortunately, the timeline has expired on December fifteenth, and no construction has started on either of the sites. After speaking with the city attorney and Mr. Nielsen, who's here tonight, we've, it's been clear that the development agreement is null and void now. So we basically have three options moving forward. Wolf River Electric could pay back the city of Isanty EDA for the cost of the subsidy and keep ownership of both parcels at the market value that was agreed upon at time of purchase. Wolf River Electric could deed both parcels back to the city at his cost. Or three, the city and Wolf River Electric could enter into a new development agreement regarding the project. Considering all of these scenarios and the increased interest that we have... Considering all of these scenarios and the increased interest that we have in industrial parcels within the community, staff recommends option two or three as the best interest of the city, um, and to continue to increase the tax base, with the overall goal of increasing development on the parcels. If option three is considered, that only one parcel, um, would be included in the new upgraded development agreement, which would still allow for the construction of sixteen thou- two sixteen thousand square foot buildings, um, on that site, or a larger building. We know that we have unlimited welding, building a forty thousand square foot building just to the south on the same size, so we know those sites can fit more. All of the documents were attached, um, we've had a lot of amendments to the agreements and per, uh, development and purchase agreements over time. Justin is here to tell you his plans, we did meet with him to talk about moving forward, and, which is why I did recommend option three, um, if it is considered, um, so he can talk more about his plans moving forward and what the delay has been.
All right. Yeah, Justin, if you want to come on up, I'm sure we'll have some, some questions for you. I guess my, my first question is when you, you originally had the two, the two lots, I mean, can you tell us, you know, why, why haven't you moved forward at this point? Or at least give us kind of some idea, and then, you know, what, what would you, if you could ask for, for anything you wanted out of this situation? I mean, what would that, what would the ideal situation be for your business, and, and, uh, you know, what you see for future growth and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, absolutely, um, well, thank you for the city and the council's time on this. I know that, uh, it's been a really amazing opportunity to even have-
Could you, could you step closer to the microphone?
And I should have you state your, state your name and address probably too, for the records.
Justin, one oh one Isanty, um, Parkway Northeast. On behalf of Wolf River Electric, I do understand that it was a huge gift, that was what was given to Wolf River. And no matter how this goes, you know, um, it's, I still see it that way, and I still appreciate the city for giving us the opportunity. So just to give a little bit of insight to the whole situation of why we took the whole time, and there still hasn't been any movement whatsoever on it. So we were, uh, we were approached about a year and a half ago, um, while we were still getting plans created, submitted, changed from one builder to the other to B C I, who, um, has a contract put in place, ready for us to sign. We were approached by a company that is a large manufacturer, um, I can, uh, their name's Sun Power, um, publicly traded company, they produce solar panels, they manufacture them, American made, um, it's like an elite product, it's like Cadillac of solar. And so they've been purchasing company, like small parts of companies, like investing into them, um, to take over market share. And so without them having any presence in the Midwest, they approached Wolf River, because we're in Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Iowa. And while we were going through negotiations of this is gonna be something that we're interested in or not, um, you know, because of minority protection provision, we were unable to take on a large loan in this process of negotiating, right? The loan was with Twenty First Century Bank, we had it already packaged, ready to present. And then it approved, it would go to the S V A. All that got put on hold because we were unable to just go ahead and pull the trigger on it, which everything was lined up to do so. And so, you know, it would be, although, you know, the, the land is, is a huge opportunity for us, the, the financials that we would have had, um, available to us, the prices that they were offering for premium product, their loan packages, everything that was presented to us, um, you know, was, was such a value that it would be impossible for us to, to risk an opportunity like this, um, to partner with such a company. They were looking at purchasing sixteen point seven, um, percent of Wolf River in exchange for seven point five, you know? And so I just share those numbers, because I want you guys to see that it's not that I don't take the opportunity from the city serious, it's that this is a revolutionary opportunity for Wolf River Electric. Over the past four years, we've gone from one point seven million in revenue to six point seven in revenue, to eighteen point eight in revenue, and we just finished twenty-two at sixty-three point three. So I mean, the space, we're maxed out where we are currently, and so we will have to do something. That's the content that I just wanted to bring to this. My attorney did give me the approval to share these things with you guys. You know, I did sign the N D A, so we weren't supposed to share too much, but just because we're coming up to the end of it, he said, you're good to go, there's, there shouldn't be any concerns. And that's why I s- I wanted to bring these things up to you guys. But hey, I understand at the end of the day what the city decides, what we would, you know, what would be amazing is if we could get, uh, extension for a period of time to commence the work. I'm confident that we'll be able to commence relatively quickly. Everything was supposed to be tightened up, and the transaction was supposed to be made last week. There's a few, a couple of things that we're working through, but they're minor, it's just marketing agreement, um, that we're working through. But that's, that's kind of the idea of it, um, but yeah, I just wanted to bring some of this content to you guys, and, and just let everybody on the council know that we understand that it was an amazing opportunity that we were given, and we appreciate it, and we don't take it for granted. But this is the situation of why it took so long.
Sure.
Sure.
What kind of extension are you looking at to, uh, safe, to be safe?
Six months would be really safe, I should be able to make three months' work, for co- for commencement, just to move dirt.
Is that for, I mean, are you hoping to keep both properties, or do you think one property is enough space for you to do both buildings that you'd originally planned on? Or what are you, what are your thoughts there?
We should be able to do two buildings, on the one, the plan with the two lots was that we did have it drawn up, so I could put a third on the backside. If you look, um, there, it's part of this land, if you look, there's a panhandle to it, if you look at the plans. That panhandle won't be used up, but what we're planning on doing with it is, once we get to that point, we'd use that, that plot of land, it's between the railroad tracks and the building one oh one Isanty, that would be the, to access that backside, the railroad track side of that, and that's where we would put, um, the, it's like a big pond, to hold the water that's required.
Holding pond?
Yep, and then a third building.
Okay.
But at this point, you know, I'm, I'm just-
Well, I mean, my only thought is that we don't, I don't want to have you do one lot and then not have the ability, I mean, you're, the, the rate you're growing, I mean, you, you'll probably fill up both, I mean, and, and, I mean, how, how quickly would you move on filling up the second lot? And I mean, how long are we gonna be waiting if?
So the significance, um, of this, um, that, that was the plan, the two buildings was the plan, to give us time to slowly move in over the next ten years. But what's happening now, we don't inventory, we don't warehouse any of our product, any of it, right? What would happen is they'd be filling our warehouse with four million dollars worth of equipment, panels, I mean, we're talking, you know, hundreds of pallets, right? So where we were planning on being able to do a slow growth into the second building, now we're at the point where we're thinking, I mean, we got almost two hundred employees, right, which is, we didn't expect to have when we first started talking about this. And now we're warehousing everything. So I mean, we're at the point now where, I mean, we might be moving into them right away, you know? I would say for sure it's like, you know, um, you know, it's, I mean, ideally, ideally, we would have the luxury of being able to have the third building as needed. We have discussed purchasing the current building that we're in from the other owners there, um, you know, so if, if it didn't happen, that's an option.
Okay.
So I just want to say, I think Justin and his company are a great asset to Isanty, um, and that is, I think that's the point of the shovel-ready properties, was to bring great assets to the city that have employees and do volume and will provide tax base. So I think, I mean, if, and based on, you know, his deal with, which he's gonna pass up, obviously, um, I think we should give him, just extend what he originally had. I think even now, he's even more qualified and worthy of getting that spot than he was a year and a half ago or two years ago. So I, I would, I would love to see him get what he needs and be able to expand, and I think he's a, he's a great business person, I think he's gonna do well. So that's my opinion on it.
I, I do want to ask one question if I could, um, are you planning on using more than fifty-one percent of each building then to start? Because that was your plan originally, um, so I guess I just want to make sure we're-
Yeah.
Giving you the right amount of space, but also not, you know, moving forward in the way we want.
So we're, we were initially looking at doing an S V A loan, and now we're looking at just doing a conventional loan, because we're gonna be moving into more than fifty-one percent with, with warehousing, you know? I wasn't sure if the warehousing considered, what they considered as, but-
Yep, warehousing would be for your business, so that's considered, um, as your space. So, I mean, obviously, we want to see you use a hundred percent of the space, so that's our goal, just-
Yeah, I mean, the concern from our perspective is if we, if we give you both lots, well, if we could have got somebody else, if it takes ten years to, for you to fill that other lot, we could have got somebody else there, then, well, that would have been ten years of tax dollars we would have been able to collect, so.
And just to maximize lots too, since they can hold large buildings, I think we want to make sure that-
But yeah, I mean, if you're gonna move fairly quickly, I mean, I don't have a problem letting you do both lots still, but, you know, I mean, I think, given a, a timeframe on what that looks like, I guess, and I don't know what you guys think, but-
Would it, would it be possible to do one lot on a contingency that he develops the other lot within a certain amount of time? And if not, then the lot is forfeited, or is that a potential contingency option? Because that would give him time to develop, and then say, I mean, he might not even want to in, in three or four years, or?
I, I can say that right now, um, industrial lots are at a premium, and we do have other current industrial businesses within our own industrial park that are hoping to grow, and would like to grow close to their existing business. So I'm not sure, you know, a contingency on a lot like this, that's premium, is the best decision for the city at this time. I think if he's, can project into how large the building needs to be, to see what size we would need for, for him to build on. I mean, you can put a pretty substantial building on a five acre parcel, so.
So would you even need the second lot?
A lot of, so just to clarify it to you, a lot of the plan, um, wasn't, a lot of what we do isn't necessarily in the warehouse. It's the access and the outside parking, we have a seventy-five vehicle fleet currently. Along with that, we're, now that we're warehousing, we're gonna need, um, Moffitt flatbed, like semis, um. Sorry.
Yes, where do you store them now, or where are they all now?
Where I store.
Where the fleet was located.
Well, currently, everybody brings it home, yeah, yeah. I can make, I can make anything work, though, I mean, I understand that's not-
Well, I mean, you got, you got five acres, you could put a heck of a lot, big square footage, footprint of a building in five acres. That's why the questioning is arising is, do you need the second lot? I mean, do you need to have that extra five acres of lot?
And regardless of which direction you decide to move, if it's for one lot or both, we can't just extend it, we need to start an entire new development agreement with him, so that's why I would like this to be ironed out now, because-
That's why I was asking the question, I understood that you needed to have a new agreement, it wasn't just extending it, so. I mean, that's the question, is do you need both, do you need ten acres?
I can make anything work, you know?
Well, that's, but that, I, I understand, Justin, but that's not what I'm asking you. I mean, do you need ten acres? Do you, is your, two buildings gonna fill up five acres and, and, and not fit the footprint of that? And then, or is your two buildings gonna fill it up, and you can add the third and still make it work? That's the question that I'm, I'm asking you.
I guess I would have to get the plans redrawn, um, for two buildings on one parcel. I know that there was, I don't know what, first time I've heard of it, but there's a big pond, that's a holding pond, that's where the drain goes. And that would have to go in, you know, for, for the building. I'm not sure if it needs to be as big, if we just do one, probably not, you would think, um. So off the top of my head, I wouldn't know, um, but, uh, I would assume I could put two buildings on one, for sure. But to do three buildings plus the holding pond, I think I would probably need more than the five, and that's an assumption, not claiming, for sure.
I s- I s- That's what I was getting at, I wanted to make sure if you-
To do, to do the three plan, I don't, I don't know, I don't think so.
Okay. That's what I was getting at, is I mean, if you, if you did need the other five acres, like Stephanie said, we want to hatch this out now, because we're redrawing this, rewriting this agreement. So if, if, if you have to have the two lots, I got no problem with that. I just want to make sure you're aware of it.
Basically, regardless, um, of, if you only do get one lot, you'll have to redo the site plan, because the parking lot currently, um, overlaps both lots, the ingress egress, so the site plan will have to be redone either way. So I think it's good for us to consider the fact that a larger building could fit on that. So even if you build two twenty thousand square foot buildings, instead of three, sixteen thousand, to get there a different way and still have the access, I think there's a lot of different ways to make better use of the five acres, that's just my opinion, but.
I guess I personally see it as he has almost two hundred employees, you said, right? And the point of the shovel-ready properties was to bring in employees, so if he has the opportunity, say he fills up the two buildings in six months, he's not exactly sure. Well, then if you want him to, if he's gonna expand more, he brings in so much value as far as employees and tax base, that it's, it far exceeds our original expectations with the E D A dollar-ready property, shovel-ready properties. So I think, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed with giving him both if he thinks he's gonna need them.
That's what I said.
Yeah, right?
That's what I said, I wanted him to make sure that he needed it, because I didn't, like you said, I didn't want to have him come back in five years and say, I, I don't, I can't use this lot now. I, I'm trying to stress to him that it's, it's best to make that decision determination now.
And I think another way is, and we discussed this too, is how BP Metals did their building, their building is, um, built to expand, so they can expand, they can double the size of their building and then double it again, um, and that's their plan. So I think if we can make sure that that's how you're moving forward, there's just better efficiencies on using one lot versus ten acres is a lot of land for a large, a large, large building. And so I just want to make sure in the city's best interest that we're growing our tax base the way it was intended, especially since your neighbors are investing and interested in investing more.
Yeah, and how many employees actually come to Isanty out of the two hundred?
Live in Isanty?
Live in Isanty, or come to the shop?
Oh, come to the shop, probably thirty come to the shop, um. I have probably twenty people that graduated from Cambridge Isanty in the past three years. And people that like live in town within the city limits, I would say to say at least ten.
I want to put this in perspective, how much tax revenue, just the city's portion, if we had a twenty thousand square foot building on that empty lot, in tax revenue per year would we get compared if it sat empty, the lot? Is it a lot?
It's a lot.
All right, for perspective, the P D building that we just bought is, what is that, fourteen thousand seven hundred square feet, Travis, roughly? Something to that effect, and tax, uh, most recent tax bill now would have become, it would have come off the rolls now that we're the owners. But, uh, the most recent tax year, the total bill was nineteen thousand eight hundred. We would be about thirty to thirty percent, thirty, thirty-three percent of that, so that building would have been, say, sixty-five hundred was us. On a twenty thousand square foot building, we'll inflate that another third, so maybe nine grand.
Okay.
Annually, rough, you know, rough math, I mean, I'm doing it just off the top of my head, but-
And that depends on sales or revenue, doesn't it?
No.
No, it doesn't, okay.
It's only the property value.
Yeah, the, the property, property values are set at ninety to a hundred and five percent, um, of actual fair market value based, that's based on statute, that's what the assessor needs to hit, and then, um, they're gonna collect backwards based on what we ask, so.
I say, I say we give them the three months, have them come back, give us a progress report, get them at the top end of the agenda, so he doesn't have to wait to the end, and, um, decide what to do with that second piece. I, I say we give them a year at least on that second piece, to, that'll give you more time to know how your expansion is looking, and I, I, I don't want to gamble.
Let me, so Mike, what, what number did you say, so you said nine, I got confused on the nineteen thousand, then back to the nine thousand, so.
I think that, uh, if I'm remembering correctly-
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, because remember, roughly speaking, you got three rough, roughly, equal taxing jurisdictions, county school and-
Yeah, okay, I just, I missed what you said there, so, and here's what I would say, let's leave it up to Justin-
Yeah, okay, I, I missed what you said there, so, and here's what I would say, let's leave it up to Justin, let's give him kind of a, a, a deal here, so if, if we um, if we give you six months on the first property, the first, you know, one, one, one parcel, I should say. Uh, we'll give you another six months on that, and then we say, we'll give you maybe a year on the second property, but if you want that year, or I mean, it really, I guess, it really doesn't matter, if you're willing to lease that property for ten thousand a year, that covers what we would cover. So I mean, if it's worth it to you to say, I wanna hold that second piece of property for myself, then you don't have to build on it, you can just lease it from us at that same, you know, let's say, ten thousand.
I do want you to consider that we do have other businesses in our industrial park that could leave, and we could miss out on large buildings during this time, so just, that needs to be considered.
But again, this, this, this shovel-ready property stuff was along, around for how many years and it never got movement, so, I mean.
But it is now.
But it is now.
But it is now.
All the lots are full.
Right, correct.
Third, so that.
I like the lease idea, though, because then he's, he's covering the tax base and he has the opportunity to pay.
We're not bringing in the jobs if we don't, if we, we could bring in more jobs if we have a different business, use it, I mean, that's certainly something there, but at least, at least if that option, maybe, or maybe we do it for a three-year period or something like that, where we say you lease it for three years for it, I don't know, I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out there, but that way, at least we cover our revenue that we could've got if it was developed. But like I said, it doesn't get us the jobs, so maybe that's, maybe that's not the answer, but it's, it's a compromise.
Well, the thing is, she, she needs to rewrite the agreement, it's not, it's not extending his existing, this is a new agreement.
I would be, I mean, he had mentioned possibly buying the building that he's in now, that and if that worked off for him, you know, uh, one five acre lot, I'm, I'd be, I'd be good with that, and then the other five acre lot can be relisted.
I think you could, I think you can.
If it's not sold in three years, he's, you have an opportunity to buy that five acre lot again.
Yeah.
And like you said, though, five acre, you could put a pretty good sized building in it, you're just gonna have, you might have spent a little extra money now reconfiguring your, your drawing and your, you know, site plan.
There's some big buildings out there that earn on five acres.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at better options for you, you know, um, I mean, I want what's right for you, what's gonna work for you.
And the city.
I'm not trying to put any words in your mouth, I want what's right for you to work in this thing, if you need, you have to do the two lots, we gotta figure out some way to make that happen, because like she says, we got a lot of interest in that. And the problem was it sat for so long, nothing got done, now they're chafing at the bit because now they think they can get it.
Yeah, no, the city's been good to me and patient with me on this whole thing, so I mean, whatever route the council goes, I'm appreciative, but, so.
Well, tell us what you want, that's.
He already did.
Well, he's just saying, whatever route the council wants to go, so, six months, we say.
But it's, it's not, we can't, we gotta rewrite the agreement.
Right, because you need that agreement to get your funding or.
I guess if we're gonna say, okay, three month extension, but we can't do that.
We can't, 'cause it's, it's the agreement, so it's, he rewrites the agreement, it's just a new agreement.
Yeah, it'll be done in about, supposed to be done last week, should be done this week, transaction should happen, um, and then, yeah, I mean, we're, at that point, they're already aware of the plan, it's part of the agreement, right? So I mean, yeah, I mean, moving quickly would, you know, be pretty easy at that point.
So if, if we were to only give you one lot, would that affect your deal that you have in place?
No.
Okay.
Then I'd say, let him pick which lot he wants, out of the two.
I say we lease it for the amount of lost tax revenue for the city, for at least, you know, give him a couple of years, I'd hate to lose, I'd hate to lose that technology, kind of the talent in the business.
That's why I'd mention, he's thinking about buying the building he's in currently, or he's leasing.
The, we, it's hard to estimate the tax loss, though, if we're looking at him building a sixteen thousand square foot building versus a forty thousand or fifty thousand if somebody else could buy it, so um I do know that's um a possibility.
I mean, how much would it be on a forty thousand square foot building, Mike?
Close to twenty thousand if it's.
Roughly twenty grand?
Roughly, roughly twenty grand would be our share, roughly.
We'd have to figure out, I, I'm not smart enough to figure that out, I mean, the fact is, if, if the bare lot is sitting bare, the county isn't gonna tax it at that, so he'd be basically, it would have to be a lease agreement to pay twenty thousand dollars even in an assigned agreement, a year. I mean, that's, and that would be, have to be up to him, but I, that isn't what I was getting at, I mean, if he could, you, you might find that you, for five acres, you might be able to put all the space you need for building in that five acres by changing the location of the building.
I think he'll, he'll have time to go from this meeting and go back to his people and say, well, what can we fit there? And you don't have to make a decision necessarily, yeah, you're gonna accept twenty grand a, a year for a lease on that today, I mean, that's, I mean, but, but I mean, as we're going through this process, I think we could give that as an option, that, you know, either, either we do the, the six months deal, or, you know, a new, new contract for the six months, and then give him the option of twenty grand a year to lease it for three years.
I think in the um essence of time here, maybe if you could agree to let staff negotiate on the development agreement, and then we can bring it forth, so he could work to see what he could fit on that five acre lot with his, and then um bring it forth together, so.
I'm good for that.
Just.
Yeah, we only got twenty minutes left.
All right. Sound good? Any other questions at all, or?
Good with that, Justin?
Could you explain to me?
They're going to work on rewrite, rewriting that, so in the meantime, you look and see about looking at the five acre lot, which lot you're looking at.
See what I can fit.
How you can fit it, and maybe, instead of putting up two sixteen thousand square foot buildings on each lot, put a forty thousand square foot building on one lot. That should be more than what you're having, you know, under two separate lots. You understand, you know where, you know where we're coming from?
And, and then if you end up needing the other lot, you, we can, you can work with city staff, that's, so is that?
Sounds great, I, I appreciate the city word when you finish talking about that earlier.
So I'll touch base with you to discuss that further in.
So that's what your homework is, to see what you can do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Justin.
All right, uh, moving on to K nine, that's one resolution to consider approving plans and ordering advertisements, excuse me, advertisement, advertisement for bids for the Isanty indoor arena and city hall roof replacement projects. This one, I believe, is Mr. Becker.
Yep, so remember that uh, here's some hail damage on both the buildings, um, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust is handling, um, well, they're, they're paying it and, and we're working with them on getting through the process. Um, they've, they've signed off on the plans and specs that Wold has put together, um, we see where it's gonna be, where it'll be advertised. Um, I think the, maybe one of the um topics of discussion here would be, is there is an alternate for a heat trace in there? Um, the league was on board with doing that, that was Wold's recommendation, I will tell you guys right now, um, I asked a different engineering company what to do, paid them four hundred bucks for it, and they said, leave the gutters off. So the league understands that, I've talked to them about it, the gutters that came off are now a separate claim that is suspended, and what they're gonna do is say, all right, we'll cons, we'll just assume we're gonna go forward with no gutters. We'll suspend the claim for twelve months, so you have four seasons to go through, see how that pays, pans out, if it works, great, good, we'll leave the gutters off, walk away, be done. Um, if we get through the end of twelve months and it doesn't work out, the league will reopen the claim and give us an option to address it that way. So that's kind of the thing to know on there, right, some of the, some of the alternates were, we had kind of been putting those in prior to even getting to that point, but that's what I think is probably gonna happen there. Yeah, otherwise, it's, it is what it is, we'll, we'll see what the, we'll see what the bids come through, um, and remember that when the bids come through, um, the League of Minnesota Cities will have to sign off on that too, 'cause they're gonna be paying the tab, so. It'll be what the, it'll be, it'll be what they wanna do.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we need to, do we need to pick out an option, though, out of these?
What's that?
You have a few different options listed there, right, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be, you're, we're gonna get bids on all of them, or to the extent that anybody, you know, anybody can bid on this alternate or that alternate, I mean, they can bid however they want, and we'll aggregate those, we'll open them up on, what is it, the thirteenth or whatever, and we'll, we'll see how it lands.
All right, I got you, I thought we had to pick one of them.
No, 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 we're gonna get options for all of it.
Yeah.
You probably just said all that and I wasn't paying attention, huh?
I have a question on that, so that's an, insurance is essentially covering that hail damage as a roof replacement?
Yep.
Okay, and then, um, so I know about maybe two months ago, we talked about ice damming, and I thought there was supposed to be something coming back from engineering firm that looked at the insulation, um, and why are we getting ice dams? Uh, I think if we're gonna do anything with addressing that, now would be the time, 'cause the roof will be off, has, was there any information that was given from the engineering firm about the condition of the insulation or the roof venting or anything like that?
Yeah, for the, uh, for Woodset that I contacted, because I didn't run the same engineering firm on this project, then giving me advice, they have, then have that perverse incentive to make the thing, make the project larger, so I didn't wanna get involved in that. Um, in Woodset, we sent them drawings, um, they looked through it, they contacted the manufacturer of the roof system, 'cause it was actually like a package type deal on that roof. Um, he said flat out that unless you're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars more, or, or, or more, um, to increase that R value, you probably, and you won't even necessarily, he can't even guarantee you'll get a different outcome. That it may simply be the wind and the elevations that are simply driving that scenario, he says, the best thing you can do is just take the gutters off, he says, that's your cheap solution, that's your easy solution.
Okay, so do you know what the R value is in there right now?
No, but that will be one of the options on, on the reroute for the uh indoor arena, is to actually lay another roof over the top.
Right.
That adds R value in that regard, and then also, in that scenario, would take care of the leaky uh skylights as well, which would be really nice and would make public works as day, I think they're, they've had about enough of that, so.
Okay, so that was one of the options in a, in a quote that we will see?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And, and the engineer, and my thought, and the League of Minnesota Cities, their thought is that's probably gonna be the cheapest option to come back in, because that's the one where you don't have to pay the labor uh to tear the other roof off.
Correct.
But, but we'll see, maybe it won't be, but we'll, we're gonna find out.
Okay, and then is there, so this isn't a flat roof, but it's got a one thirty, or one to thirty-two pitch, is there any specific reason why we went such a low pitch on that? Because it's not, it's not working very well, and it, I mean, at that point, one, one thirty-two is like, why not, why wasn't there a flat roof? Would that be, has that ever been talked about, I know that flat roofs aren't ideal, but they don't seem to have these issues.
I don't know, this is.
Lot roofs cave in.
They have more issues.
Okay, well, I mean, this roof is almost flat anyways.
Not talked about a lot.
Okay, well, you, that's fair, you just see all these, I mean, almost all commercial buildings of this size are flat roofs, so it just makes you wonder why, why was this one not, it's, that's.
That, yeah, there's.
Yeah, and it.
They're high maintenance.
Yeah, and ice, and the ice farms that we have are on that east side on the lower roof, you know, it's, I mean, in Matt Sylvester, he and I have talked about this before, I mean, his, his sense is that, that the problem is, is combination of, you know, it would be nice if there was better R value, okay, that would be nice. But that, this really ends up being a wind issue and where it continues to push snow over and over and over and over, and if it's just gonna keep taking off the gutters for sixty grand a pop every time, just take, take gutters off. You know, if the ice really starts bending right over the edge, at least then when the gutters are off, we can actually take the front loader over and pull that off, you know? I mean, 'cause even, even going, we tried the, the one year we tried to go over there and thought, um, pressure, uh, you know, heated pressure washer, pull that off? Crikey, that didn't help either, and that was, that was ten grand, I mean, it was, you lose, lose, basically, so hopefully just leaving, hopefully leaving the gutters off is gonna be a, finally, a, a reasonable solution, that isn't gonna cost us any more money going forward.
Okay, well, when we get, when we get that uh, the proposals and the costs, would it be possible to have someone do some sort of energy analysis on, say if it's R, R twenty right now, and then say if we wanted to build up the roof and do R forty, so twelve, twice the insulation, is there somebody that could do an energy audit and tell us how much money that, a year that would save us in heat, or would say the BMX Association? I know it doesn't necessarily save us, but.
Any insulating contractor can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would be entirely on us, and any, any effect that it has on the actual project itself, you know, extending the timeline, add to contractors, any of that is now our cost.
Okay.
Uh, the League of Minnesota Cities has no interest in um upping our, our value unless it is the cheapest option.
There.
Right, so the, the roof overlay is part of the system that um the, the original builder or manufacturer of the roof um offers, and to the extent that that would add our value and be the cheapest option, League of Minnesota Cities is on board with that, but otherwise, no, they don't have any interest in, in covering additional costs like that in otherwise.
BMX Association has talked about buying the building too.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious, because we're in there now, and if, you know, if it, say it's an extra fifty thousand dollars to re-insulate the roof, it's gonna be more than that, but that's just a number, but it saves you twenty thousand dollars a year in heat.
That doesn't save the city any money.
Well, I know it doesn't save the city money, but it saves the environment too, because you're using less, less heat, so, I mean, I, I don't know, it's just an idea like, so if we're gonna, I like to have all the information, so if we make a decision financially on this, I mean, we're gonna see, you know, we're gonna see a big, a bigger number for the insulation, well, why would anybody wanna do it unless you have the information that would show how much money that would save to have more insulation? And then the, the added benefit would be maybe not ice damming as much, potentially, so if we had a, like a, just numbers, so that we can sort of weigh the, the pros and cons, so the insulation company should give that, like he said, but, does that make sense?
Yeah, we can, we can look into that, just remember this, the league is not, insurance company is not going to accept delays in the actual construction, they aren't going to accept any additional costs, you, we are not going to be able to piggyback, it'll be entirely on us. And so if we say, hey, you guys are already pulling off the roof, let us have a chance to get in there, they may very well say, no, this project needs to get done, this is the price, if you wanna do that, you do that, which is, to be honest, is exactly what I think they are going to tell us.
Okay.
Um, and if that is the case, especially if it's just gonna be the roof overlay, um, we have the same access to the underside of that roof today as we do in six months and twelve months. Like, that, that doesn't change, and to be honest, I really do think that is going to end up being the low bid is the roof overlay.
Okay, so the, then really, it's kind of redundant to even get in that on the quote then, 'cause.
I think at the minimum, we should wait and see what this comes through at first, and, and see, because I, I have a hard time believing that, that overlay isn't going to be the cheapest option when it's bid.
Right.
I have no idea how you could do it for less, paying somebody to pull it off, I, I don't know, so.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the uh going out for bids?
I motion Dan second it.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Uh, K ten, resolution to consider approving purchase of accounts payable workflow software.
So this is an item that we've been trying to get away, since I got here, we've been trying to get away from uh distributing and routing paper everywhere. Uh, when I got here, we started out, we had colored folders for each department, and when something was allocated, it would go first into Travis's folder, get circulated to him, then it would transfer to a different folder, it would go to Sean Sullivan, transferred to another folder, go to Josie Wood, 'cause she would've been public services director at the time. And we've been trying to get away from that, uh, Kira's Act funding came out, uh, one of the things that we got to do was uh spend some money on workflow uh through laser, with Laserfish, which is the electronic depository. Um, and that was meant to be able to, now I can write invoices digitally even when people are not in city hall, right? We've been working on that for quite a while, and that thing is not working, it's just flat out not working, and it's not doing what I need it to do, for the amount of time it is costing staff, I may as well be walking them around di, on paper. This option is um relatively cheap, sixty-three hundred bucks one time, there is ongoing fees, council should know that, we were signing up for ongoing fees, but it integrates directly into my software. When department heads say, all right, I've got this invoice, they can enter that digitally through an online portal, they will see that invoice amount, they will see any pending invoice amounts, whether or not they've, even though it's just in process, not paid yet, they will see what has already been paid, and they will see a number comparing that to their budget. All right, and that's just one, one nice feature of this, um, but the, in the end, the long term, the long term thought on this is, invest in technology today, so that we don't have to hire additional people in the future, and to the extent that you do need to hire additional full-time staff in the future, you should invest in technology to make sure that that hire is as far down the road as it can be in the end.
Have you sampled the software, or been using it a little bit?
So this ties into the accounting software that we have, and it uses the same platform as what we call My Viewpoint, My Viewpoint is the online portal our department has used currently to monitor accounts, and it, it is simply an add-on into that platform exactly, that the department has already have logins for, already have permissions for, and already utilize. So it would be something that department heads would be familiar with, to say the least.
So I see in the, in the quote, um, it's got the numbers, but then it says. So I see in the, in the quote, it's got the numbers, but then it says with the star next to it, numbers, or, uh, numbers above do not include travel costs. Uh, to me it's kind of weird, they give a, they give a quote, but then they don't give you how much it's going to cost for travel costs, is that?
Because you, travel is only upon request. You don't, they would not normally travel. And if you do ask for them to travel, you, implementation will take even longer. I don't want them to travel and they don't want to travel and I don't think there's any need for that.
So it's not a travel expense that they have to come here to do something initially?
Nope.
Okay, and then there was another thing, it says annual support and I think that was, what was it, like a thousand dollars or something?
Yep.
Does that mean actual support if something goes wrong or is that just a fancy term for subscription costs?
No, that's actual support.
Okay.
Like I actually can call people, I can actually email people. We know their names at, at the support center, we know who specializes in which, which modules, all those kinds of things, yep.
So is that unlimited basically, it's just a yearly thing?
Yeah, if I have to call them every single week, well, if, if I had to call them every single week, Civic Systems would report the problems that are ongoing to Cassell, who is the actual software developer, and they would come up with a quarterly update to end those support calls.
Okay, so it's a flat rate.
Which is one of those things I really like about my accounting software, where if there is an actual problem, they actually do fix it and actually do push out an update on a quarterly basis, which is fantastic.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Uh, one, one more question I've got here. So the Kira's money that we use to pay for that, I mean, if this software is not working, can we get that money back from?
We are just starting the process of changing the Laserfish support, right? So we got, we were assigned by Laserfish this group over here. It has not worked out and we are just starting that process of getting switched. So Laserfish themselves has just now become aware of this problem. I am going to suggest that we should be reimbursed for some portion of that. Now, I suspect the original provider who maybe didn't do so well, they're going to say, no, you got exactly what you were supposed to get and if it didn't work, great, it was because of X, Y, Z. I'm sure it will be a, but yes, I am going to suggest that I did not get my money was worth on this. I don't know how far I'll get, but I will bring it up, that's for darn sure.
Certainly worth trying and we, we just started using this January first of this year, right? So I mean, we're talking about.
And it has literally taken Pam and Tabitha and I more time to process invoices than it did before.
I've had that happen in my business before where you think, okay, this new POS is going to really do what you need it to do and you get it and it's like, boy, this is, does not work the way I, it showed, it showed me that it would work, you know.
But in, but in the end, if, if we're going to push off hiring, finding on staff till we have twelve or fifteen thousand people, you know, these types of technology things need to be in place to be able to push ourselves that far.
Left to pay for this?
This, actually, this would not be paid with Kira's money this time, that's all is gone and sailed and done. This is actually, we have a transfer from Fund nine twenty into some Fund six fourteen. Six fourteen is where we pay for technology that is related to the general fund. And the reason I recommend we transfer out of nine twenty is at the end of twenty twenty-two, council approved closing debt service fund nine thirty. Now that we've gotten through the audit and seen the final numbers, we're transferring from nine thirty, because that debt fund is done and closed, about seventy-nine thousand dollars out of nine thirty into nine twenty. So we've got a little bit of wiggle room, we could peel off, you know, seven, eight percent of that, seventy-nine, seventy-nine thousand, cover this. Nine twenty still gets a nice little gift that'll help us in budget planning for this coming year, so.
What was nine thirty again?
Nine thirty is a debt service fund. Right, so once we get to the end of the schedule, we've made the final payment, any remaining cash, you either have to transfer to another debt service fund or utilize for capital improvements that would otherwise result, could otherwise result in, in a debt issue, so.
All right, I've got a motion to approve the purchase of the accounts payable workflow software.
A second.
Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Himmel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. On the consent agenda, I did want to just say thank you to the Isanty Lions Club for donating the ten, or the, the money, I should say, the funds for ten folding picnic tables to be used for city events. It's awfully generous of them and we, we certainly appreciate that, so. Uh, any other questions on any other consent item agendas?
I have a question on other communications, did that come now or is that, no?
You can discuss that after the meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Collison, a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero, we are adjourned.
Are you planning on bringing back the part three of committee of the whole? It is ten o'clock. Okay.